Okay, we will get started. Welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting. It's Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and we are getting started right at seven P. M. All right, would anyone like to get us started tonight with an inspirational thought or an invocation?
Me? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the great blessings that we have and receive. We thank thee for being able to meet here in peace and safety and for the freedoms that we have to do so. We ask thee as we meet that we be able to have an understanding of our town's needs, that as we discuss the items that are on the agenda, that we will be able to help each other to understand them in a way which will help our town and that we will be able to make good decisions. We ask these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. All right, would anyone like to lead us in the Pledge of Legions tonight?
I will do it.
Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Romero. Okay. On the screen here, we can see the agenda for tonight, and unless there's any objections, I think we'll just proceed in this order. Thank you. But before we do, of course, we will have the public forum. So for the members of the public who are here tonight, that's your opportunity to address the commission with regard to anything that's on your mind. And so I will go ahead and open the public forum now and invite any comments if anyone would like to address the commission. And if not, then we can close the public forum at seven oh-two, and we'll move right into Agenda Item number one, which is a right-of-way vacation in the Tanner Flats subdivision.
Okay, so on May sixth, the city council approved an amendment to the Tanner Flats Development Agreement. Once they started construction, they needed to change some grading. With that change, the, they removed two dead roads, and so in order to include that property into one of the lots, we'll need to vacate the right-of-ways. The roads were Tiger Way and Crimson Lane. Here's their application, and then when this decides to load. These are the right-of-ways that are being vacated.
The cloud-shaped areas.
Mm-hmm. So.
Looks pretty familiar. This is something we looked at in our last meeting with regard to the redesign of the subdivision. So I was just reading through the recommended motion there. I don't think we've dealt with right-of-way vacations here, at least not that I remember, and so I was sorting out whether we are providing a recommendation or not. We are providing a recommendation.
And then it'll go to city council?
And then it'll go to city council for, yeah, their resolution, so. All right, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me. Does anyone have any questions or anything we need to discuss on this?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Vacating those sections and turning them into a lot.
Yep, basically turning them into lots according to the redesign that we saw previously. All right, would anyone like to make a motion with a recommendation for the city council?
I will.
Make a motion to provide positive recommendation to the city council for the right-of-way vacation at Tiger Way and Crimson Lane within the Tanner Flats Phase Two subdivision.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Romero. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moak. Any further discussion on that? All right, if not, then let's vote. Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wait?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's forwarded with a positive recommendation and it is unanimous. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item number two. This is also related to the Tanner Flats subdivision, and this is an amendment to Phase Two.
Yeah, so we have to do the plot amendment for Phase Two with the right-of-way vacation before they can move forward with their other phases. It's in the R-ten zone. It will consist of seventeen lots. And the Phase Two, and this is a change from the plot that was approved last year in August. It's like, like we talked about, they just discovered some issues when they started construction. This is the location. And then this is what Phase Two will look like specifically. As you can see, they got, they just got rid of those two roads, which made it so they could have two additional lots. And then we're just looking for a motion to approve or deny the plot amendment for Phase Two.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, commissioners, any thoughts or questions on this one?
Again, really straightforward.
Obviously tied up with the, with the one we just addressed, so I thought we saw last time. Okay, would anyone be prepared to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the plot amendment for the Tanner Flats subdivision Phase Two.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wait. Any further discussion on this agenda item? Okay, well, let's vote. Commissioner Mo?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wait?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Okay, that plot amendment is approved and it is unanimous. Very good. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item number three. This is a proposed code amendment with regard to agritourism in Santaquin City.
All right, planning commissioners, this is, this is kind of a carryover from the last meeting. I should recognize that we have Dustin Rowley and Jace Rowley here. They've been a big part of, of kind of navigating through this proposal and, and providing suggestions for the draft language that's before you. From the last meeting, there was a handful of suggestions, and I've implemented that into the draft that's before you. If I can remember right, I know that it was suggested that agriculture in the land use table that it mentions a reference to the animal regulations, so that it's clear that those are still something that's applicable to agriculture in, in any of those zones. I think there was a couple little scrivener errors that, that I fixed in the land use tables, but as we discussed last time, a majority of the comments and things that were discussed are down below in the conditions for agritourism and, and even more specifically, the hospitality element of agritourism. So I did provide this to, to both Dustin and Jace. I don't know if there's, if they have any comments or suggestions. I don't know if you want to ask them about it, but a couple things that, that were done since, since we met last. There was those two points towards the end of the hospitality that, that you wanted to have removed, and those, those have been removed. In, in some coordination with, with, with the mayor and various staff, there, there was something that I added that I thought could maybe provide a little bit more clarification. On the draft that you see, it would be item number four under Section F, which basically just is that hospitality services shall be temporary and shall not allow stays for a duration longer than seven days. Again, I think I was trying to emphasize the whole temporary aspect of this. And then there was kind of the, the, let's see. There was kind of the, the point that was, that was discussed and not really any direction given on, on the ratio of, of the size of the property to the number of hospitality units that could be allowed. That's why I have those highlighted in, in the version that you have, so that, that can still be addressed. But it, something I also did was able to send this to our legal counsel. He took a look at it and did kind of a quick review. Obviously, this is still early in the legislative process, and he'll, he'll chime in a little bit, but he did give a few, a few points, a couple little minor edits that I won't go through every little thing that I have. Some of it's just legalese and getting it to, to read in a better way. But one of the things that he talked about is, is something that I addressed last meeting, and that's kind of the gray area of what is, is appropriate for agritourism that's not going to cross that line into taking away from the agriculture. And that's, that's a hard thing to, to try and define. He, he talked about, you know, and made a point that receptions is kind of a tricky thing, you know, what, what does receptions do? And I don't think anybody has, has necessarily a problem or a concern with receptions or photography or things like that, because obviously orchards are naturally beautiful, but it's just, it's kind of one of those uses that, well, what does a wedding have to do with agriculture? Except for the fact that it's a beautiful setting, you know? Obviously, U-Picks and farmers markets and some of those other things have a lot more obvious correlation. But the other thing that he brought up and, and not really any specifics, but he's got some concerns and, and and he just emphasized kind of the complications with, with any sort of a hospitality element or, or a, you know, temporary stay with, with living situations, whether they be temporary or whether someone stays there permanent or, 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 you know, if they, they, they go against that, I mean, you, you might be familiar with, with how sometimes trailer parks or, or, sorry, RV parks can be complicated, because if someone stays in an RV park for a certain amount of time, that, that can maybe lead to it becoming more of a permanent situation, and then the regulation and the enforcement of it can be challenging and complicated. And anyways, there was a number of things that, that he was concerned about with that. I think it's doable, and I think if the city has a desire to, to allow for something like that, I think, I think it could be worked out, but it'll probably just take some more time with legal counsel to get, get the language where it needs to be to, to be able to manage that a little bit more appropriately. Again, he had kind of a fresh perspective on things. There's a number of things that just are kind of questions of, of how this works with, with agriculture and, you know, again, that gray area of going too far and it becoming a full-fledged business rather than something that's supplementing agriculture, but I guess with that said, I want to maybe emphasize that, that this is not a take-it-or-leave-it type of a proposal. If there's parts of this that need a little bit more time or parts of it that you don't like, then they can, they can be removed. This is really kind of a proposal that's, that's initiated from within. Again, there was, there was a desire from those in our agriculture community that wanted to see this, and I think the city council saw it worthwhile to, to initiate a process to review it. So don't take this as a, you got to accept all of it or none of it. If there's things that, that need a little bit more work and other things that maybe we can move forward, we, we can do this in, in kind of phases, if you, if you will. But without any sort of specifics, you know, I talked with him about it and, and got kind of an idea of some of the concerns that, that he has. Those, those are kind of the things that we have for you tonight that are different than what we discussed last meeting or, or that will help aid you in your discussion for tonight. Again, the process for this is, is we've held a public hearing last meeting. It's now at a point where the planning commission can provide a recommendation, and then it'll move to the city council for their, their review and their consideration, and they'll ultimately be the legislative authority in, in approving, denying, or modifying this, this draft proposal. So I think with that, unless you have any questions for me, or like I say, I don't know if, if Jace or Dustin have anything to say after their review of this.
Thanks, Jason. So as part of our discussion last time, we did specifically ask for some feedback from the community and those interested in this proposed change, and since there are some folks here who may be interested in that, I would like to hear if there's any feedback or comments. So at this time, if, if anyone would like to comment on this proposal, I would certainly invite you to come up and, and make those comments if you'd like to. If you would, please state your name for us for the record.
My name's Jace Rowley. I'm representing Rowley's Red Barn, Rowley Southridge Farms. The only thing, the only real comment or feedback I have is just, we appreciate your consideration in this. I might define agritourism maybe a little differently than what the lawyer does. I, to me, agritourism is what brings people to our community and to our farms. And, and sometimes that's a wedding. I don't think agritourism means that they have to come and actually pick a piece of fruit or learn about a piece of fruit or, or livestock or whatever the farm may be. We're trying to bring people to our farms to not only raise awareness for agriculture and for our farming, but also to keep our farms viable and to be able to make enough money to support our, our farming and our business and our families. And so I view agritourism as more of just a way to bring people to the farm and enjoy our community and our, and the recreation that we have there. What we're doing is a little different than the hospitality conversation. We're putting a train in there just north of the Red Barn. A train that we think customers will enjoy seeing the blossoms in the springtime, being able to pick peaches in the fall time, and maybe even do something during the Christmas season that would bring them to, to our farm. And so anyway, we just really appreciate you guys taking a look at this. We hope this is something that you'll support and so we can keep working towards, towards that. So thank you. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but.
Is any of the proposals that you've seen restricting you in a way that you wouldn't like?
No. The way I read it, it's, it's a little vague in its definition of what agritourism is. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I think having it a little vague, you know, allows a little bit of, of creativity and ideas that we can do to, to bring people to the farm. Yeah, no, as far as I'm concerned, I didn't see anything that would limit us. I don't know. Do you agree with that?
One of the questions we had last time was on the hospitality part of it. Is that something you're even interested in, or?
Right now, the only thing we do in, in hospitality, pardon, this might be a better question for Dustin, is we're part of a, a group called Harvest Host. And you may have seen the RVs parked on the south side of the Red Barn. Those RVs are just part of a, it's a national, I think what it is, it's a group that they come and they stay on farms. They don't pay anything. We don't provide them anything. And they just agree to come in and be a customer of your business, and you just agree to provide a spot for them to camp. We limit people to just one night as part of the agreement. But that's really the only thing that we've, we've ever done in the hospitality realm, and I don't know that that would even qualify. It's more like just to stay in the parking lot and come and buy apples or ice cream or whatever, whatever we have. So, yeah. Not right now.
Thank you. Trevor, maybe a question for Jace. I just thought of. As we're talking about agritourism and people coming onto your farm and things like that, is there any complications or any any, any problems or how would you address the whole, the certifications that you guys have to maintain as a global gap? That, 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 that you have to adhere to in order to sell the, the crop that you, you grow?
So what's your question? Just how?
Just how would these agritourism activities, how, have you thought about that and how that, that, how those activities could relate to the, the efforts that you make to, to, to be in compliance with those global gap requirements?
Yeah, we, we do require the people who visit our farm to adhere by certain rules and regulations. You know, for example, using the restroom in the orchard, things like that we prohibit. Food and drink, you know, you're only supposed to have water in the orchard, things like that. As far as like our, you know, back forty event where we have people out in the corn maze, and we obviously have food and drink and all of those kinds of things out there, but that's just, that part of our farm is not included in, in our global gap certification. So we just don't certify those, those areas, and, and they're just set aside for other purposes.
So you kind of segment areas of your farm that, that are a little bit more appropriate for the public to be in, and, and other ones are, are kind of more prohibited so that you can maintain that?
Yeah, yeah. And as far as, just, just quickly before I sit back down, when people come to the farm, and I think Dustin could probably agree with this, is people, I think, in, in our communities lack the, the real ability to be able to get out on a farm and feel connected to nature and to our land and things like that. And so when people come to our farm, even if it's for a wedding or for, you know, photography events, I mean, you wouldn't believe the reaction of the people that, you know, as they come and they lay blankets out and, and things that I've taken for granted since I was just a young boy. It's like these people, they just love it. They feel a connection to it. That's why I maybe would disagree just a little bit with, with the definition that maybe the lawyer was saying. Just, I think anything that gets people onto the farm and feeling the spirit of agriculture and, and the crop, I think, I think it really does provide a benefit outside of just the financial benefit to our company. So, anyway. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good insight also. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Rowley. And a good question, Jason. All right, is there any other comments anyone would like to make?
Probably brief. Jace took care of it all.
Good. Please state your name for us.
I'm Dustin Rowley. On behalf of Cherry Hill Farms, we appreciate, like Jace said, the partnership we've had in the city for many years. We've been here for a while. I'm, I'm four generations. My son is fifth generation in on our farm, and it's been a great partnership as we've expanded in different areas of this city in Santaquin. We look forward to continuing those relationships as we move forward and as we continue to hone in on a good definition here for agritourism. And I do agree with Jace, there's many factors that can go into all this agritourism stuff. On our farm, Cherry Hill Farms, on the east side of Santaquin, we are in, we are looking into hospitality-type stuff in nightly rentals or things that could be advantageous for us with our event venue around that area as well. We get consistently asked weekly, where are good places for the wedding party or their relatives to stay? And always get suggested that we should put something on a farm that they could stay and experience a little bit more of that exposure from farming. So that's kind of what, where this all stemmed from a little bit, along with a few other things, being able to put walking paths or running paths throughout a farm or an orchard where people can have access to those things on their runs or whatever they want to do. So that's kind of from our side perspective or our side of the thing with agritourism is we are looking to the hospitality addition to move forward with some of this stuff. So that's all I've got.
Can, maybe we can ask you a question. Can you flesh out maybe what your ideas are a little bit more? One of the things that we've wrestled with is what would be some appropriate regulations with regard to hospitality and agritourism? And we've kind of gotten back and forth on that and, you know, had some different discussions, and we weren't really sure where to land. And so I'd be really interested in hearing kind of what you have in mind, you know, with regard to how those units would be used and how many you're thinking would be suitable for your operation and things like that.
Okay. First of all, I do not want to make them breakfast or lunch or dinner. I'm not interested. They can go pick an apple or a peach. So that won't be part of what, what our offering is, but essentially it would be, I think, one of the, I don't remember, remember which one it is, but a short stay, number four. They shall temporary and shall not allow stays for a duration longer than seven days. I think that's great. I don't want a, whatever you call that over in Lake Shore, what is it, Lake, Spring Lake? I'm not interested in that either, where they're long-term stays. So it would be potentially in a, in a clump or a group of five units or so that could house, they're not going to be big, you know, they'll have a bed or a couple beds and a small kitchen area and a bathroom and shower, electricity plumbed in the whole way, whatever we got to do to, to work with the city on all that. And then we would have driveways and parking lots and stuff where they could park, and then they could just be in the field. And at certain times of the year, they can go pick and maybe we'll give them a pair of pruners or something. Who knows? The sky's the limit. We could have them working for us. Anyway, so that's kind of where we're at. We have these little box houses. It's boxhouse.com, I think, is what that website is, but we're looking at potentially getting some of those that will be very permanent, something that's not on wheels, slab-on-grade, something like that, that we could make look really nice and functional. So short-term, one-night stays, seven-night stays, whatever it might be.
So as this is written, there's a limit of eight units. Is that sufficient for what you're looking at then? It sounded like you wanted five or six. It sounded like the eight would be sufficient.
I think that would be, sorry, sorry. I think that would be great, yeah. I'm okay with the eight, eight-limit unit or eight-unit limit. Let's get that right. And we do have more than five acres, so. We're clear there. But anyway, yeah, we, we just appreciate you're looking into this and working with us to get some of this done.
Yeah, great, thank you. That's, that's helpful input. Appreciate it. Sorry. Yeah, please.
Troy Frazier. Oh, I just remember the community, and we've heard about the agro-
Agritourism?
Agritourism. And basically, I haven't really written all through, but I just want to say as a person in the community, I support it. I recommend, I mean, Santaquin kind of is known for orchards and farms and ranches, and a lot of things are disappearing. So I think, you know, we should try to support as much of the local, hey, you got a ranch, you got a farm, you got something. There's a lot of people multi-generational. There's some of us trying to create multi-generational. So I hope for, I look forward to seeing Santaquin be more open to more supportive local agriculture, local other stuff, because people do have opportunities to make money in the land different ways, not just the traditional ways. So I really encourage something going forward, and it's part of why I'm here, to support them, but also to make sure that there's some openness to it.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, anything else? Any other comments tonight? All right, then we can move into discussion on these proposed changes. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? We've had some time to think about it a little bit, had some good input tonight, Jason.
And if I may, just while it's fresh on, on, on your, your mind, I appreciate Commissioner Hoffman's question. Maybe a thought there, because I know that there was a whole bunch of uncertainty of what to do for that ratio. And with the, the specific answer that he gave, I mean, that ratio could always change if you wanted to consider it, but, but kind of what I heard and I think would be maybe a good start is that you just cap it at, at eight if you have at least five acres. If you have twenty acres, it's still just eight. And I think that might be a good, you know, dipping your toe into the water rather than trying to figure out what, what the best thing. I think the proposal that, that, you know, that kind of started this whole amendment consideration was, was for what, what Dustin explained. So that might, might be an easy way to look at it is, you know, any, anything can always be reconsidered and amended as needed, but that may be a good starting point and, and doesn't complicate trying to figure out what an appropriate ratio would be in, in, you know, a different situation or from a different person at the farm.
I agree. That's a good point. I think that makes a lot of sense. And as you kind of talked about last time, it's sort of in line with what we have in other areas of the code for other uses as well.
And I guess the last thing I'll say, and I think where, where the city attorney is coming from was not necessarily that he's, he's against the idea or anything. It's just, I think there needs to be more clarification. Like, for instance, temporary hospitality was kind of the best term that I could come up with. I don't know if there's a better term. But I think there's enough ambiguity in that term that he suggested we needed to find that term of what exactly is temporary hospitality. So, and I got that comment from a couple people of, of what exactly does that mean? Because, you know, I think we've discussed it, and maybe you guys are in line with kind of my thought of what hospitality is, but there could be different ways that could be construed, and, and obviously more clarification is, is better to, to try and pinpoint what it is you're, you're hoping to allow for and, and regulate. So it's, it's, like I say, it's, it's just a complicated topic. It's, it's a, you know, hospitality is, you know, in my mind, you think of hotels, motels, but, but, you know, is hotels, motels really working with agriculture or is something more like glamping? I think, you know, in his mind, it was, that's something that there's, is a little bit more, or like, you know, people have covered wagons that you could stay in. There's, there's a little bit more of an easier correlation you can make with those types of things than, than a hotel in the middle of an orchard, you know what I mean? So those were the kind of things that he expressed as, as maybe there's some more work that can be done to kind of hone in on that. Like I say, when it comes to any sort of a living situation, whether it be temporary or permanent, there can be complications from a legal standpoint of, of how that works. And, and if you like the idea and you recommend it, great. We can continue to, I'll continue to work with the, the city attorney on- Uh, and, and if you like the idea and you recommend it, great. We can continue to, I'll continue to work with this, the city attorney on, on getting the language where it can be. Um, you know, I've, uh, I've, I've tried to keep others in the loop, but there'll probably be, you know, other, other departments that want to weigh in on this. I know that, you know, there'll probably be some public safety that questions they'll have about how this works and accessibility and stuff like that. So again, this is still pretty early in the process. The first part of, of the legislative process is, is a public hearing in the planning commission and it's kind of like we're just really diving into, to what this is and what it, what it means, but, uh, I just wanted to offer those, those, uh, additional points just as, as you're thinking about this and, and know that there's still some work to do that, you know, if, if you like it, you can recommend it, move forward and, and there, there'll be some fine tuning to, to help with, with the legalese and maybe some other, uh, you know, like public safety type, type considerations, but, um, or you can, you can continue to work on this. Uh, like I say, I don't know how much more discussion you want to have or how much you want to see before you feel comfortable making a recommendation, but those, those are basically the thoughts that I have for you before you, you, uh, have your, your discussion on it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? I think last time the biggest question we had was with the hospitality units.
Last time, the biggest question we had was with the hospitality units and the numbers and the per acreage. And I think that question's been answered now. So I'm good with the as written with eight, no matter, over five acres, no matter how many acres you have.
Yeah, I feel good about it too. I think from our last discussion, like you said, everyone, um, I believe everyone felt like, um, we were in a pretty good spot with it with just those few questions. So, but of course that's what we're here to discuss. So if there's anything um, else that you thought about in the time that we've had to think about it or anything you'd like to see added or removed, that's what we're here for. So. Yeah. What are you thinking?
I like the changes that have been made. I think it defines what we were looking at last time.
I think so too. Any thoughts?
My only thought, I wasn't here at the last one. I apologize. But I'm wondering what the eight. What is the concept of not wanting more if you have more acreage? I, I'm just, just to play the devil's advocate here. I'm just wondering what would be the downfall of having more than eight?
So Jason can speak to this better than I can, but I, I think the general idea was that this would be something that would be supplemental to the agricultural operation and it should be that, basically that it should be supplemental and not turn into a bigger thing that is, you know, more of a hospitality business rather than an agricultural business with a supplemental, you know, agritourism, uh, component to it, but I'll look over there if there's anything you want to add.
Well said. The only thing I'd add to that is where the number eight came from is this concept's not foreign to what we already allow in the city. Uh, right now, a, someone could do a home occupation, a major home occupation, uh, for a bed and breakfast. And, and the maximum number of rooms you could have for a bed and breakfast is eight. So a lot of the conditions that you see there are actually kind of recycled from the, the conditions that are for bed and breakfasts. Breakfast units or breakfast homes. So that's where the number eight came from is just consistent with that, but, you know, to, to what Trevor said, yeah, that's, that's again. What I said earlier, there's, there's a gray area that, that's hard to, to pinpoint and define. And like, like was mentioned, you know, there's a little bit of flexibility and, and uh, vagueness that allows for creativity for, for these farms to, to do stuff. Um, like I say, it could be a festival. It could be a farmer's market. It could be a number of things. It's hard to, you know, what's the line from, from a becoming agritourism and supporting agriculture to becoming something that's not that? Uh, that's kind of the trickiest thing with, with, with this is, is trying to, to find that element now.
So my question is, if they have, say they have twenty acres.
Uh huh.
They, I don't, I don't know. I guess it would have to come through us anyways. They rezone it to where, say there's four kids and they rezone it to where each kid has five acres and then they have eight on each five. You know, like that would be a lot of work if they wanted to do more than the eight. But is that like? I don't know. I guess. Would, is that something that we don't want? If they're, am I asking that the right way? Are you understanding what I'm saying?
I think I see where you're going. Yeah. And that's where a lot of the discussion was last time. Um, it seems a little bit arbitrary, right? To put a number on there and what is the right number? Um, and we went back and forth on that a lot. Um, and to Jason's point earlier, I think, um, maybe why we're kind of centering back in on eight is because it feels like a little bit of a safe number to try this out. Um, and it meets the needs of, of those who are here who said they'd like to do this. And if someone wants to come in down the road and make a case for why it should be something more than eight, then we could look at it again and, and make changes then if we wanted to.
I'm fine with eight. I'm just thinking of like
Yeah.
Things that could happen if, if we aren't wanting more than eight. Do we need to change any wording on that? But.
Yeah. And it's hard, it's hard to know, right? And that's, like I said, that's where a lot of the discussion was last time and we went back and forth and back and forth and we just had to pick a number. Um, that hopefully is sufficient at this point in time, right?
But I, I like where it comes from, where we came from with the eight. So.
Yeah. No, that's a good question.
Yeah, it is. I think the challenge for the planning commission and the city council and all this is, is I think in working with, with, uh, Jason Dustin, you know, I'll, I guess I'll speak for myself. There, there's not any big glaring concerns or issues I have with what they're talking about doing. Uh, you know, I think there's, there's obviously things to be considered and try and think through, but this ordinance amendment doesn't just apply for the specific proposals that they want to do. It's, it's kind of opening it up to a number of different things. And, and, you know, I think what they're doing is fine, but, but it's trying to think of all the situations of what, what could be brought forward and, you know, what is going to uh, be supportive of agriculture and what, you know, might, might be testing the, the, the limit that, that the community has for, for something in a residential zone that's in an orchard. You know what I mean? So that's, that's always the challenge with any ordinance amendment is not, you know, I think it's very helpful to have them here and, and to, to give us, you know, real world situations that they're looking at doing for themselves, but it's also trying to think of all the hypotheticals that, that could come forward and, and what that means and how to, to regulate this. We're trying to kind of look in a crystal ball to figure out how to, to address any and all, uh, possibilities that could happen. So we have a definition, you know, it's, it may not be perfect and, and, you know, there's obviously some, some, uh, wordsmithing that could be done to make it better. But it's also trying to, to just get the right balance of, cause I, I agree with what Jay said is, is, you know, I appreciate and I, I, uh, can admire the creativity that, that these farmers have to, to, you know, to, to let the public, uh, have access to their farms and to, to do things that are, you know, create, create a community events and stuff like that. And, and really ultimately what this is all about is, is preserving agriculture. Uh, there's a number of farms that have, have been sold because it's just not penciling out anymore or, or there's a lack of desire for people to keep, keep, uh, doing just, you know, your traditional farming. But if there's an added element to it of agritourism and things like that, it can make it more viable and therefore preserves those, those, uh, those farms and those orchards. Uh, rather than seeing it sold off and, and developed into, to something that people maybe aren't as excited about.
Are there surrounding cities that have hospitality units on their farms?
You know, that's a good question. I haven't, I haven't looked that far into it. Obviously, I mean, locally, I don't know of, of that. I, obviously there's an element of that because, I mean, probably the, the, the most well-known example is, is, uh, uh, you know, the vineyards and stuff in Southern California, they, they really embrace agriculture or agritourism and, and it, it becomes almost, you know, wine country is, is turns into this destination of people want to go and stay in wine country and experience the, the, the vineyard and, and the farm and, and everything that goes along with that. It's, that's kind of in, in a sense, kind of what this is, is maybe opening up a, a little bit, uh, opportunity to is, is, is to embrace uh, those types of activities rather than just growing fruit and selling it wholesale. It, it opens up the possibilities for these farmers to do something more.
Just letting it stew for a minute. Well, as, uh, as Drew said earlier, I'm, I'm in support of this and I'd like to see it move forward. Um, I can't think of anything particular that I think we need to work on anymore. Um, and unless anyone else has any, anything they'd like to work on somewhere, I, I'd like to see it move forward to the city council, the recommendation. And if everyone's in agreement, I would look for a motion to that effect.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I, can I get the words so that I can read it?
We don't have a recommended motion.
We don't have a recommended motion for you like we typically do on the memo because this is such a.
So, um, so I'd like to make a motion.
So she, she knows the title of it.
Sure.
And essentially we're just making recommendations to the city council.
Just the.
Just forward the, forward the title of the.
Okay. So just, I'd like to make a motion to forward a recommendation for the agritourism in Santaquin City. Don't you say anything else?
I would just say as proposed in the draft.
As proposed in the draft.
If you have any modifications to this draft or if you like the draft as is.
I think, I like it as is. So.
Okay. All right. So we have a, a motion with a positive recommendation. Um, any, or do we have a second?
One more second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moke, second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion? All right. Let's vote. Commissioner Tolman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Okay. That is forwarded with a positive recommendation to the city council and it is unanimous.
And Trevor, if I may, uh, if there's uh, substantive changes that the city council likes to make, they may kick this back to the planning commission to have you take another look at it based on whatever they see in this or, or continuing to work with legal. Uh, there might be minor changes. I would encourage you, uh, to, to maybe if, if you, even if you are able to come to the city council meeting and, and participate in that. Again, this is kind of a, a new thing, kind of an iterative, iterative process, if you will, but like I say, I, I think if there's any sort of substantial changes, uh, it, it may be something that can come back to have you, uh, provide a recommendation on that, but, uh, I just wanted to say that just in case there might be changes, changes to this, but I appreciate a recommendation being given and, and allowing this to kind of move forward through the process and now get it in, in the, in front of the council to have them give their, their, uh, thoughts and, and feelings on.
Yep. Very good. That sounds good. Thanks. All right. We will move on now to agenda item number four. Uh, we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting on June 10th, 2025. Do we need to discuss anything with regard to those minutes? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on June 10th.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Those minutes are approved and it is unanimous. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Um, staff, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Maybe just kind of a, a report on some things that have been happening. Um, DRC this morning, there was a site plan for a new Mountain America Credit Union. This would be on Main Street. Uh, it did get tabled. There's some things that are red lines that are still needing to work on and, and some things, but uh, that, that's something in the process to make, maybe make you aware of and, and give you an update on. Uh, for the next DRC meeting, we're continuing to work on, uh, the site plan for the data center. Uh, that's something that we provided some comments, uh, on, but hasn't formally made it to a DRC meeting yet, but that may be something that happens soon. Uh, there also is a proposed preliminary plan for, uh, what is now the Cortland Town Homes. Um, if you remember, there was, there was Cortland Park condominiums that, that was approved in a development agreement. This was a development right behind Macy's. Um, the developer who now owns that, uh, due to various different reasons, uh, proposed to, to amend that development agreement and, and is now having that be more geared towards townhomes. It's actually going to be a reduction in the number of units and instead of stacked flats, uh, you know, three-story condominium buildings, it's going to be more townhomes. So, uh, this, this is now starting the, the subdivision process. And eventually we'll make it to the planning commission who would be the land use authority on that. Uh, so those are some, some things happening at DRC for, uh, your next planning commission meeting. Um, we have an application right now that the, a public hearing will be set for. This is a proposed rezone. Uh, it is a proposed project that is called the Ranch RV Resort. So this is basically, uh, property on the, the north, uh, east side of town, uh, kind of north of CS Lewis. That area that's between the freeway and, and, uh, SR 198. Uh, the family who owns that property is, um, is interested in, in having the city consider a rezone that would allow for, uh, an RV resort. So, uh, yeah, very, very creative, uh, new idea that is not really uh, something that would, would work with our current code, but hence why they're asking for a rezone to to kind of work through the process to see if, if that's a project or, or a, a use. Uh, I think they're emphasizing the difference between an RV park. This would be an RV resort that would have a little bit more to it, some, some common areas, uh, you know, a, a rodeo museum, um, um, amenities, things like that. So something that, that you can anticipate, like I say, we'll, we'll set a public hearing uh, by the end of this week, which will, uh, be set for your next planning commission meeting. So something, something to, to look forward to there. Um, I think that's probably a good summary of the things that are kind of coming up and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thanks. Uh, any questions, commissioners? All right. We will look forward to it. Uh, commissioners, anything else we need to discuss? All right. Well, if not, I think we're done. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Come on, you guys.